We'd like to call this meeting to order at this time. This is our City of Palaca, February 23rd, 2017 meeting. We would ask that former mayor and county commissioner Reverend Carl N. Flag come forward. He's a senior pastor at Mount Tabor First Baptist Church. Pastor Flag, would you come forward at this time and lead us with the invocation and also the pledge? And everyone, please stand.
As we bow our heads in reverence of our hearts to Almighty God, God we honor you, we adore you, Lord we bow before you, we come sacredly before you at this time to acknowledge your presence in our community. We thank you for these redisciple officials, we thank you for these administrators, we thank you, Lord, most of all, for our citizens who day in and day out choose to live in such a place. We ask you to lead and guide these commissioners in their deliberations and discussions this evening, crown them with wisdom and knowledge and understanding, and have their decisions to be the best decisions that they can make with the information they have to move us progressively forward. For your God and your God alone, and we acknowledge that there's none beside thee. Bless these parents and these students and these administrators from our respective schools as these very important students are being honored tonight. Heavenly Father, help all of us know that we must contribute to the betterment of a quality of living for all, and we are one big family. Bless us and keep us now, your servants pray, in Christmending. Amen.
Let's salute our nation together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Pastor Flag. We also want to make sure that we recognize Pastor Flag, he was recently recognized by the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce as the Small Business Owner, the Businessman of the Year. We want to make sure we recognize him and tell him thank you for all his hard work, and we also want to thank the staff at Flag's Florinity as well. So we want to recognize him. Roll call, please.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Warren?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
All members are present at count of course. You have my word.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the January 26th, 2017 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now moving to our public recognition and presentations. We've got one proclamation today. Just Angela Murtaugh here. Do we have anyone present from the Azalea Festival Committee or Downtown Palaca? Seeing that we will move forward with the proclamation at this time, proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on March 22nd, 1936, the Palaca Floral Committee held a local flower and plant show at the Ravine Gardens, which they named Azalea Festival, at the suggestion of Ms. Suzie Walton, a member of the committee. Also on March 22nd, 1936, thousands of shrimpers from all over the southeastern United States participated in the first annual All Florida Shrine Day, also held at the Ravine Gardens. This event was such a huge success that return to the Ravine Gardens the following year was held in conjunction with the Junior Chamber of Commerce, J.C.'s Day, and the Southeastern Conference, also held at the Ravine Gardens. And whereas in 1938, the J.C.'s changed the name of their event to the Azalea Festival, again held at the gardens in conjunction with the All Florida Shrine Day. The event included a beauty pageant, and on February 20th, 1938, Ms. Geraldine Meyer of St. Petersburg was chosen from a field of 10 contestants and crowned as the first Azalea Queen. And whereas throughout the years, 63 women have been crowned Azalea Queen or Miss Azalea, as the title will come to be known. The pageant, a qualifier for the Miss Florida competition, has seen two of its queens crowned Miss Florida, and one, Ms. Tardon Holland, was crowned Miss America in 1997. And whereas throughout the years, the J.C.'s Azalea Festival always held in early March in conjunction with Shrine Day and the Azalea Queen Pageant, grew in change and was held annually except for three years during World War II, and six years during the 1950s until the Palaca J.C.'s was disbanded after the 1996 Azalea Festival. And whereas in 1997, the Putnam County Scholarship Foundation took over sponsorship of the festival and kept the tradition of the festival through 2003 festival season. In 2005, the Palaca Main Street Board of Directors trademarked the name and organized the 59th Annual Palaca Azalea Festival. 2017 Palaca Azalea Festival, organized by Downtown Palaca Inc., marks the 71st festival held, which makes it one of the oldest festivals in Florida. Now therefore, I tarrel hill together with the members of the Palaca City Commission to hereby proclaim March 1st through 5th, 2017, as 71st Annual Florida Azalea Festival Days in the City of Palaca. And we urge all citizens to take part in the planned events, fun and festivities of this, one of Florida's oldest, more time honored festivals, and to thank its organizers, both past and present, for their hard work and contribution to our community's history and heritage. And witness whereof, I am here and soon set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this 23rd day of February in the year of our Lord 2017. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy Williams. Just want to make sure that we present this proclamation to Downtown Palaca Inc. And let's give a round of applause for it. This next award, getting everything today. And today, this next award is something new that we started here in the city, and it's called the, it's called the Palaca Pride Hometown Hero Award. And it's an award that we're giving to different individuals who exemplify what a Palacan should be. It's not necessarily someone who comes from, who has a great business, or someone who has any of those things, but it's just true Palacan people who love their community and who give back in extraordinary ways. And we want to make sure that we begin to recognize individuals throughout this community for the great things that they do. And so our first hometown hero, I'll read a little bit about that individual. This individual is involved in the daily operation of his own business enterprises, which is called Browning Consulting. While the president of his own business interests, he's also the vice president of New Products for Goodman Company, which is headquartered in West Palm Beach, Florida. The company is a real estate development and investment firm specializing in retail and commercial development, led by the founder and chairman Murray H. Goodman. The organizer, has served as a fore runner in the development and management of regional and super regional malls, developing, owning, and managing more than 20 million square feet of commercial space. Our recipient currently serves on the boards of many organizations, including Associated Industries of Florida, Florida for Better Transportation, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, Keep Putnam Beautiful, Road Havers Boys Ranch, Palaca Airport Authority, and is a longtime member of Sunrise Rotary. He's also a member of the Nature Conservatory National Wildlife Federation, Florida Wildlife Federation, Ducks Unlimited, and the Florida Foreign Bureau. I could go on and on talking about the things that this individual was involved in, but most importantly, what I will say is although he went to Florida State and obtained his bachelor's degree there in business management, he got his real education in Putnam County. And this young man is one who truly loves this community, he's committed to this community, even at times when he didn't necessarily agree. He will fight and do what's best for the community, and we want to make sure we recognize him at this time. I would ask that Mr. John P. Browning Jr. come forward. The Palaca Pride Hometown Hero Award presented to John Browning, in grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the City of Palaca and Putnam County through community advocacy, Palaca City Commission and Staff, February 23rd, 2017.
I don't know what to say, I'm very seldom speechless, but I'm always speechless. I love this, this town, and I grew up here, my father grew up here, his father grew up here, and his father spent most of his life here. We love it, we don't always agree, but in the end, we're for Palacan, and I do appreciate it. I've been all over, I tell you what, we've got a, we've got a city commission that goes to Tallahassee, we see them up there, they go to Washington, they're everywhere, and I tell you, it's a warm feeling. It was Mary, we've worked together for a lot of years. I thank you so much. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and you only make me work harder, and I'll continue to, I'll make mistakes, and I promise you, if I do, I'll apologize for immediately, and we'll keep on going, because in this town, we are forgiving community, we're a community that disagrees sometimes, but we come back together and we'll do better. I'm so excited about the future of Putnam County, and I'm just honored to give this thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Next up, a special presentation for Black History Month. We've highlighted a couple individuals this year. The first is Dr. James A. Long, a beloved and trusted local physician, and 1969 Florida Medical Association Doctor of the Year. He's the namesake of James A. Long Elementary School and the Palaca Housing Authority's James A. Long Neighborhood. James A. Long Jr. was the son of Reverend and Mrs. J.A. Long. He was born in Daytona Beach and was educated in Florida schools, completing his school, completing high school at Edward Waters College. He continued his medical education at Howard University, what a great place, graduated in 1925, and completed his internship at General Hospital in Kansas City, Missouri in 1927. In 1927, Dr. Long came to Palaca with his brother, Dr. Conrad C. Long, who was a dentist, where they both established practices. Until the time of his death, he practiced medicine in Palaca and neighboring cities where he was highly respected, loved and cherished, not only by his medical skills, but also for his deep interest and concerns for his patient. He was affectionately referred to as Papa. He and his late wife, Godia, had one daughter, Mary Ellen Long George, who still lives in Palaca. Dr. Long served as a lecturer, consultant, and friend, and was considered an angel of mercy by those around him. He was a member and a trustee of Bethel AME Church of Palaca affiliated with Putnam County and the National Medical Dental and Pharmaceutical Associations, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Young Men's Progress Club of Florida, Mason's Elks, Putnam County Biracial Committee, and was a staff member of the Putnam County Memorial Hospital. He was also a 25-year member of the Selected Services Board and served as a trustee for Bethune-Cookman and Ed Waters Colleges. He was the college physician for Florida Memorial College, and in 1969, Dr. Long was named Doctor of the Year by the Florida Medical Association. His last recognitions were his appointment by Governor Reuben Askew to the Board of Examiners of Nursing Home Administrators, and election to the Board of Directors of the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. Dr. James A. Long. Brown.
He asked me to say a little bit more about him, because it hadn't been a lot written, but Dr. Long served the total public, white and black, he had white and black patients. He worked at, anybody who called him, he went to. And back in those days, nobody knew what, the hospitalization insurance was insurance for doctors. He got paid in chickens and eggs and anything else, potatoes or whatever anybody could pay him, but I never knew him to turn anybody down. He was very athletic, he played tennis, because they had a tennis court in St. Augustine at Florida Memorial, and he played tennis there. He also was a referee for football games, so not only with his medical abilities, but he did anything he could do to help anybody in the community. He also had patients in my grandmother's hospital, which was Mary Lawson Hospital, and they were great friends, they kind of competed a little bit sometime against each other. And he was godfather to me and to my children, so.
Our next person is John Henry Pop Lloyd. An American baseball shortstop, Negro, and a Negro League manager. Pop Lloyd was, is also, he's recently been inducted in 1977 to the, to the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame. Was born on April 25th, 1884, he died on March 19th, 1964. John Henry Pop Lloyd is considered the greatest shortstop in Negro League history. Both Babe Ruth and Ted Hollow, a noted sports writer, believed Lloyd to be the greatest baseball player ever. John Henry Lloyd was born in Palaca, a descendant of slaves. His father died when Lloyd was a baby. Lloyd's maternal grandmother, Maria Jenkins, raised him in Jacksonville, possibly because of the great fire in Palaca that damaged businesses and changed the overall economic situation in Palaca. But before Lloyd had completed elementary school, he had to go to work full-time. Early on, he delivered groceries and was a railroad porter. He began his professional baseball career in 1905, playing catcher for the Acme's of Macon, Georgia, and for the Cuban Ex Giants of Philadelphia in 1906, playing second base. The following season, Sol White signed him for the Ex Giants' archrival, Philadelphia Giants, and moved him to shortstop, where he would remain there the bulk of his career. And in 1921, he was hired to organize a new team, the Columbus Buckeyes, in the Young Negro National League. He continued his baseball career playing, managing, or both, for various teams, including a stint in Cuba before retiring to Atlantic City, where he worked in Atlantic City Schools. He was named El Chuchara, which translates to the shovel or the tablespoon, a reference to his ability to field batted balls. He was a heavy hitter, usually batting cleanup during his prime, and he was an expert place hitter and bunter. He was, he was a renowned shortstop, ranked by most experts as second only to Dick Lundey among black shortstops before integration, and he was referred to as the Black Wagner, a reference to the Pittsburgh Pirates Hall of Famer, Honus Wagner. On Lloyd, Wagner said, "It's an honor to be compared to him." Lloyd batted .337, 970 hits, and 2,881 at bats in the Negro League. According to recent studies sponsored by the National Baseball Hall of Fame that covers the organized poster 1920 Negro Leagues, Lloyd batted .343 with a 450 slug-in percentage. Known for his gentlemanly conduct, Lloyd was probably the most sought-after African-American player of his generation. He was seemingly ageless, winning two batting titles in his 40s and playing at the highest level of black ball until he was 48. He would continue to coach and play semi-pro baseball for another 10 years, admired by his teammates and opponents alike for his generosity and quiet strength. John Henry Pop Lloyd also was credited with finding a young man who has, has a part name after him, Lefty, Mr. Lefty Turner. Pop Lloyd reached back, and Lefty Turner is also a great Palacan who's been memorialized here in this community, and he had a smile that would light up a room, and Pastor Flag can attest to that. But Lefty Turner was brought into the Negro League by John Henry Pop Lloyd. John Henry Pop Lloyd is one of those icons that Palacan often, Palacans don't really know about. There's history of him at the parks in Hastings, there's history all around Atlantic City, but in the City of Palaca, many of us don't know who John Henry Pop Lloyd is. He was a great friend to Babe Ruth, he was a great friend to Negro Leaguers. We have a number of people in the City of Palaca who played professional baseball as a result of the legacy left by John Henry Pop Lloyd. So for the record, we do have a Palacan who's in Cooperstown. Next up is A. Philip Randolph. We'll hear more about A. Philip Randolph in a little bit, but A. Philip Randolph was born in Crescent City. A. Philip Randolph is considered to be the father of the civil rights movement. This is a man who organized the first, he organized the first labor union for African-Americans in this country. He's also credited with, he's also credited with desegregating the porters' union in the United States as it relates to railroad porters. A. Philip Randolph was the advisor to Dr. Martin Luther King and the main organizer of the March on Washington in 1963. In 1964, he received the Presidential Medal of Freedom, one of the highest honors given to a citizen in this country. A. Philip Randolph is an icon. He also helped desegregate defense contracts within the U.S. Armed Force, within the U.S. government, and he also led the move to desegregate the armed forces. A Putnam County resident who was a drum major for justice, an advocate, and an advisor to Dr. King and all those that followed. Born right here in Putnam County, he's memorialized with the A. Philip Randolph Association and Museum in Philadelphia. And all too many times, as Putnam Countyans, we forget to recognize A. Philip Randolph, a martyr and the father of the civil rights movement. And here are just a few pictures of, of A. Philip Randolph throughout as he's gone to the White House, he's with President Kennedy. He was also with President, the bottom picture is him with President Lyndon Johnson as he's awarded the Medal of Freedom in 1964. We've got flyers of the meetings that were scheduled throughout the country, and at the end, there's a quote that says, "Make wars unprofitable, and you make them impossible." There's also a picture of him on the cover of Life Magazine. A. Philip Randolph says, "Justice is never given, it is exacted, and the struggle must be continuous for freedom, is never a final fact, but a continual evolving process to higher and higher levels of human, social, economic, political, and religious relationship." A. Philip Randolph. These are some of the icons of our black history right here in Putnam County. Not only is it black history, it's Palacan and Putnam County history. These are the things that allow us to all celebrate the love necessary for us to move We'll next move into our resolution. Resolution 2017 12-6, a resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida approving an honorary street name designated that section of North 11th Street running north of its intersection with Reed Street, US Highway 17, to also be known as A. Philip Randolph Avenue. Whereas, A. Philip Randolph was born on April 15th, 1889, in Crescent City, Putnam County, Florida, the second son of James and Elizabeth Randolph. Both strong supporters of civil rights, his father was a traveling minister of the AME Church, and his family moved to Jacksonville in 1961, where he attended Cookman Institute, one of the first high schools for African-Americans in the United States, and graduated valedictorian of his class in 1907. And whereas Mr. Randolph was an inspirational person who demonstrated an unyielding struggle for human rights on behalf of marginalizing groups in society, and he was active in both civil rights movement and the labor movement in the United States. And whereas Mr. Randolph was a tireless and highly effective advocate for African-American employment rights during the 1930s and 40s, in leading the efforts to organize the porters of the employment company, he founded the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters and organized that advance, an organization that advanced the rights of African-American workers to dignity, respect, and decent livelihood. Later Amtrak named one of its luxury sleeping cars, the Superliner, the Superliner Two Deluxe Sleeper 32503 in honor of Mr. Randolph. And whereas, at the urgent of Mr. Randolph, President Franklin Roosevelt issued Executive Order 8802 on June 25th, 1941, declaring that there shall be no discrimination in the employment of workers in defense industries and in government because of race, creed, color, or national origin, and established the Fair Employment Practices Commission to oversee that order. And whereas, at the urgent of Mr. Randolph, President Harry Truman issued Executive Order 9981 on July 26th, 1948, declaring there shall be equality of treatment and opportunity for all persons in armed services without regard to race, color, religion, or national origin. His policy was put into effect as rapidly as possible, and closed the segregated Marine Corps boot camp at Montford Point in Jacksonville, North Carolina. And whereas, Mr. Randolph was active in the planning and organizing of many civil rights efforts, including the Prayer Pilgrimage for Freedom in 1957, the marches for school integration in 1958 and 1959, and the March on Washington in 1963. He was the first speaker of the day at the March on Washington on August 28th, 1963, during which Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. delivered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. Whereas in 1964, President Lyndon Johnson awarded Mr. Randolph the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the Civil Rights Act are all fruits of the seeds that Mr. Randolph and others sold many years before. And whereas, the Civil Rights Revolution was launched in no small part based on efforts of Mr. Randolph, who is known as the father of the civil rights movements. Therefore, it is fitting to honor the work of Mr. Randolph and his commitment to a better United States by reminding our citizenry of his strong ties to Putnam County, the place of his birth. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Florida, that honorary street designation signs shall be placed at the appropriate intersections of North 11th Street, beginning at Reed Street, declaring the street to be also designed as A. Philip Randolph Avenue to honor his legacy and pay tribute to his efforts on behalf of the people of the United States to form a more perfect union. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is the motion set on the floor? Is there any readiness? Questions placed. Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's now passed and adopted by the City Commission of Palaca, Florida, on this 23rd day of February in the year of our Lord 2017. Amen. A. Philip Randolph Avenue, 11th Street will now be known as A. Philip Randolph Avenue of the City of Palaca, memorializing the greatness of a Putnam County man. Let's give a round of applause for those actions. I also want to, I also saw that Ms. Murtaugh came in, and I want to have her come up and just say a little bit about the Azalea Festival.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Angela Murtaugh, I'm Vice President of DPI, we are the Merchants Association. We are, we put the Florida Azalea Festival on, it will be March 4th and 5th. We're looking forward to the event. We have vendors set up downtown, we're looking for the community's support. On behalf of DPI, we'd like to thank everyone, Sam Deputy, our board, without Sam, the Florida Azalea Festival would be non-existent. Florida Azalea Festival, um, would be non-existent. Um, we are asking everyone if you could join us for the weekend of the festival. There would be booths available, we still have booth space. It starts at the riverfront and go all the way to Eleventh Street. So, um, this is, we did the pack, we did the festival, um, for six years. We had it for another six years. We just got it again. So we're looking forward to it, and we thank everyone. It is the longest-running festival in Florida. We also have the beauty pageant, uh, which will be on the floor at CL Overture, and of course, the mayor's reception is always part of the festival. Thank you so much.
At this time, I want to bring up Chief Jason Shaw. Chief Shaw? We have a special presentation coming from the Palacka Police Department.
Mayor Hill. Mr. Suggs, Commissioner. As you all know, in November of two thousand sixteen, the Police Department went through a three-day onsite assessment by a panel of assessors to ensure that we met the required standards to become reaccredited by the Commission of Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation. Today, it is my pleasure to inform you that on yesterday, the Palacka Police Department received its official reaccreditation certificate from the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation, and with granted, being recredited, we'll be accredited for three years. We are now an accredited agency, uh, to display, showing that we display high standard. During that presentation, we would present this plaque that now will hang in my office. It's one of our goals that we set forth at the beginning of the year in my appointment, uh, to make sure that we achieve. And it was the last goal, uh, that we achieved this year, um, and we're very happy and excited to have it displayed in my office for the remainder until we do our next accreditation. I wanted to be able to present it. It's to the commission and the hope that you all enjoy as a picture, so maybe that's a good thing as well.
And so, um, and I, I don't know if everyone really understands how important this is for a law enforcement agency. You know, we were treated yesterday, uh, me and our city manager, Mr. Suggs, we had an opportunity to go over and sit through the preliminary session after having sat through some of the sessions back in, in November of last year. But you still understand how proud we are of the efforts of our police department under the leadership of Chief Shaw. We got an opportunity to sit down, and out of all the agencies that were in that room, the city of Palacka was the only agency there that had everything right. It had no corrective actions in their assessment, they, they conformed to all standards within their industry, and they are a leader in what they do. And so we definitely want to commend Chief Shaw on that. One of the great highlights of that event was having, was sitting down and listening to Chief and everyone that was there talk about, um, the assessors were overwhelmed. They saw, they, they saw a large crowd and a bunch of police cars over at the Palacka Mall on October thirty-first, and the assessor said, you know, "I, I just hope nothing bad is going on because I see all those cars over there and all those people." And he said he left his hotel and he walked over to see what was going on, and he realized that it was almost three thousand people at the Palacka Mall, mostly children, getting an opportunity to take a part in a Halloween celebration and a candy giveaway. He saw officers engage in the community, giving away candy, making additional candy runs, and citizens coming together in a small community like Palacka, just for the sake of our children. And it was really exciting, and he was really overwhelmed by that. And we just want to take this time out, Chief, to tell you thank you for the hard work, want to tell you, Captain Forsythe, it's just an honor to have you guys here and to do the work that you're doing and keep up the work. We also want to bring up Ms. Carrie Hawkins at this time.
Thank you for having me. My name's Carrie Hawkins. I work over at the Northeast Florida Educational Consortium, um, working on a grant called Rural Partnership for Healthy Kids. It's a two-year, million-dollar grant, so it's not going anywhere. Um, basically, we are helping families come in contact with affordable health insurance. And I gave some people some flyers and kind of explains a little bit about the income requirements. Um, I guess the reason it's relevant to this board and, uh, to the schools is we are in the schools. We are in Putnam County schools, trying to come into contact with families. You'll probably see us around with different things. We come with a computer, we kind of, we have the internet, we have everything to help just get those applications finished. They're done in fifteen or twenty minutes, and basically, the benefit of it is working families can pay twenty dollars a month for health insurance for all the children and their family, which seems impossible, but it's actually really not, um, it's very relevant to city employees, county employees, teachers, staffs, um, at schools. A, a family of four can make over forty-eight thousand dollars a year qualify for this insurance. So, um, it's out there, it's been around since nineteen ninety-three, it's not going anywhere, it's not associated with, um, kind of the, um, concerns that people have about what might happen with the Affordable Care Act. So it's, it's here to stay. And I actually called today, and a lot of your doctor's offices here in town accept it, kids care, pediatric, acute care, pediatric, azalea help, community care, pediatric. So it's available in your town and all the surrounding areas as well. Um, in terms of the board, what I'm hoping is that we can get the information out to the different departments that you serve so that they can see that, maybe if you have an insurance board or something, maybe we could, uh, become a part of that. Um, I know NIECAC has been in Putnam County for a very long time, and I understand that they're pretty respected here, so, um, I would hope this program has the same sentiment toward it, because we are just here to help kids and get them signed up, get them involved with care checks, and also to make sure that they're getting their medications, because there's, there's no deductible. Um, you're just paying a very short, a small premium, and, um, maybe we'll encourage people to take their kids to the hospital more often, uh, there are a couple prescriptions of cheese and, um, just keeping healthy kids so they can be in school and so that parents aren't having to miss work because their kids are sick and all the different things that comes around, keeping their kids healthy and a family healthy. Um, ways that you can help as a community, we could be potentially, I have so much information that I can give you stacks and stacks. They have a printing shop at, at NIECAC, so let's print them on for you. We'd really like to get it into churches and like communities, families, I mean, anything that you can think of that might help serve the community to get this out there. I'll be at the Azalea Fest, I'm gonna be there on, as a vendor, so I'll be there as well. Um, and I just thank you for having me and you for letting me speak to you, and I look forward to serving Putnam County here as tired as being here, so, thank you very much.
And as Commissioner of the Board, if you would join me at this time? Now is the time that you guys have all been waiting for. Of course, I have a coughing attack as it comes up. But, this is always the fun time for us. It's an opportunity to say thank you, say thank you to our citizens, to say thank you to our children. First of all, we want to say thank you to our educators. And there's a group of people in the back of the room who work with these kids every day, who don't hear that off a lot. We just want to make sure we take this time and, would all educators please stand if you recognize them? Also, we'd like to make sure we recognize all the family members, the parents, neighbors, friends who are here with our young people. Would you please stand at this time, because without you, this wouldn't be possible. And now for our Student of the Month, for February twenty-seventeen. What we're gonna do at this time is ask the educators, if they would, with the representatives from the school, if they would accompany the children as they come forward. As they come forward, we'll get the certificates out. When we finish, we will actually take one picture for the newspaper, and then we'll form lines and we'll come back and take individual pictures for any parents or family members who want to come in and take pictures with them as well. We want to make sure we also recognize former superintendent and school board members, David Bubbers, in the back of the room. I can stop though if you have bigger words. First on that list, from Brown and Pierce Elementary, Kayden Ferguson. From CL Overture Sixth Grade Center, Nicholas Stigl. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, Via Everett. From Yates Middle School, Darren Evans. Hey, let's get it up for Darren again. Congratulations. From James L. Low Elementary, Amber Thorer. From Jenkins Middle School, Molly Woods. Good job, guys. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Cynthia O'Leary. From Melo Elementary School, Dorian Montserrati Delgado. From Mosley Elementary, Gavin Sharon. From Palacka High School, Matthew Westbury. Matthew's gonna be in the back of the line for the picture. From Penn Howard Baptist Church, Eli White Sweet, I'm sorry, Eli Sweet. From Putnam Academy Arts and Sciences, Locking Gill Yard. And from Putnam Math High School, Luke Lee. So guys, as we always do, when we have Student of the Month, we're gonna let you know that we're proud of you. We're proud of the things that you've accomplished. In the third grade, I have one little saying that Ms. Thomas and Agreed would make us say every day. And we start every day off by saying it and even embrace it over the course of time. Says, "I am somebody. My mind can believe it, and my heart can conceive it. I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." Regardless of what anybody else tells you, regardless of what anybody else says, remember that you can do all things, and just continue to be great. Your parents are proud of you, your family's proud of you, the commission's proud of you, your city's proud of you. So again, thank you, and we expect more of this. So we're gonna take a brief recess so that we can get total check of the newspaper for any family members that want to take pictures.